So, the, y'all scheduled a four and a half percent rate increase. Historically, it's been three percent for about the last 10 years. Last year, y'all approved a four and a half percent that was targeted around servicing the bond debt for the seventy-five to eighty million dollars that we borrowed. That's not by design, those are just positions that have high turnover. We do employ a number of temps in order to fill the labor positions, some of our CSRs and all, so we do accommodate some of those costs in other areas as well. Our operating costs between twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, up about a million six to twenty million four hundred ninety-eight thousand one hundred, driven mostly by electricity, fuel costs and some marginal equipment rental costs. Our supply costs went from fifteen to almost twenty-one million. This is driven by two or three components. The largest at about three point eight million is the purchase of metering components for the AMI work, and so that is rolled into supplies as we phase out the old AMR meters and move into the new cellular read meters. Our capital budget gone up from eight point seven to about twelve million. This is large capital, typically things at the plants. I've listed generators, vehicles, roofs, building repair, things like that, that are part of our overall operational control, it's our operating capital. The interfund number is a little bit disingenuous, but I put this together so that when you compare the formal budget document that you have in hand, the numbers should line up. That interfund number is our pilot pile-off IDCs, vehicles, all the costs, plus twenty million dollars in depreciation, which is not a true expense, and so it's added back later in the presentation, but I didn't want y'all to get three or four spreadsheets with varying numbers so that you had to guess where they came from. The pilot pile-off and IDCs are generally speaking about ten point eight million that are costs associated with the capital fund that are transferred back for services. So our total expenses without capital of twelve million is ninety-nine point five million dollars. Our expenses with capital are around a hundred and eleven and a half million dollars. The next slot, next line is our revenue total. Generally speaking, water and sewer sales, tap sales make up around a hundred and eight, hundred and nine million. The remainder of that is reimbursements from the fort, additional tap sales, different revenue we collect, and six million dollars in grants. So this number is elevated by about six million dollars this year. The next line is the revenue plus depreciation. So I told y'all a few minutes ago, we have depreciation shown in our expenses line item, so we add it back in order to offset that depreciation because we don't actually fund depreciation. Our debt service then is about thirty-seven million. Our non-fund expenses are around four and a half million. These are costs sent to the department that don't actually transfer to another fund. They're just individual line items, so they're not billed by another department directly. And then our revenue financed capital at about six and a half million. These are water and sewer pipe costs for system breaks, replacements, things like that. When you total all that up, you end up with our final position without capital costs of around a positive seven million. Our final position with capital costs around negative five million. So what that means is somewhere in between how much capital we actually expend in the coming year will dictate whether or not our cash flow is positive or negative. So, does anybody have any questions on this slide?
Do you recognize this commissioner in a second?
Okay. Um, do you want to answer questions slide by slide or just wait till the end of your presentation?
I'm fine for it just to be a casual conversation as we go through it.
Okay, yes sir. Okay, so my question, it pertains to, it's a couple of things. Grants, how are you all, how's your department actively seeking and applying for grants?
So, the next slide is the grants and loan slide.
See, that's why, that's why I was like, let me listen to the whole one. So I'mma hold the rest of my questions because you may answer them in the presentation. Thank you.
Absolutely. So, these are some, these are some loans, grants, a combination of those. So, we've pursued everything that's not nailed down. We have relinquished pursuit of some grant opportunities, but by and large, if it looks feasible, we've tried to look for opportunities to pursue them. Obviously, the bond issue is a loan. From EDA, we received about a one point three million dollar grant for corporate park water and sewer, which helped offset about forty percent of the cost of that project. We received two congressly directed spending earmarks, one on Travis Boykin and one on Hicks intake that, the paperwork has been finalized, we're waiting on official release of the funding. We received a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for lead and copper service line inventory. We also received a loan, half loan, half grant for the lead service line replacement program. Just to be clear, we do not believe we have lead service lines in Augusta. However, the way the grant was written, we can also replace galvanized service lines, and so we are also able to use part of that grant funding to help us do additional metering work that's related to the meter replacement program. So, it was a six million of that is grant, six million is loan, that's a subsidized interest rate. It was a good opportunity to take that funding, we can return it if we decide we do not want to use it. We're looking at a GFA loan for meter replacements. This is a subsidized interest rate loan over twenty years for the upgrade of all of the meters to cellular. That is expensive, but we expect it to be revenue neutral in that the efficiencies of the new meters will capture more revenue. In addition, we will have fewer stuck and erroneous meters, so you should have less phone calls from people saying, "I got a seven hundred dollar water bill," because we will be able to see their water bill in real time. And so it's overall a positive for the city, and it, again, we expect it to be revenue neutral. We have another loan package we submitted for the canal repair through the Army Corps at fifty-five million dollars. That's a huge number. We submitted that package four years ago. It's still in the process of being evaluated, but that is a pretty comprehensive package to rebuild most of the things that are wrong with the canal, the diversion dam, all the structures, et cetera. So we continue to push forward on that package, and we'll make a determination on its applicability in the coming months. I also included SPLAS nine. No matter what we have going on, the bulkhead gates are still included in some form or fashion in that, and that is flood control for downtown Augusta. We are proceeding forward with that project currently because it needs to be, needs to be done. So, we have applied for some other grants. These are the ones that are in a final stage of procurement or completing the grant process. The rest of them are a little bit further out. We have a three and a half million dollar package that's been submitted for some water treatment equipment. We also will be resubmitting for the twenty twenty-six grant opening through GFA in January. So, we've got a number of these that are just on a rolling process of being submitted. These are the ones that are, you know, loans or grants or applications that are really close to being completed and funds distributed. Let's see. All right, so, where we are right now is outside of our operating, which I told you all the cash flow is relatively speaking about neutral, looking at what you're, what you're seeing, we have about seventy-five million dollars in bond revenue that is waiting on which projects to build. The hurricane definitely threw a lot of things for a loop, and we actually have had to pull back and look at what projects are critical. The canal embankment repair is the first one, currently estimated at nineteen million dollars. We are working, the administrator's office and Tetra Tech are consulting and some of their specialists to try to see if that is recoverable in part or in total through FEMA. Right now, we've still in the paperwork transmission process of what they consider to be eligible, but we are actively pursuing that and hope to have a better resolution by the end of this year. The clarifiers, JBM is JB Messerly wastewater plant. The primary clarifiers came in for the preliminary cost takeaway at four and a half million. Those have to be done. Those were listed in the consent order. Digestors four and five are two of the chrom tanks you see when you drive out to the airport right by the plant. We had a structural failure in two of them eighteen months apart. The other one was two weeks ago. We're picking the lids out of them right now with a crane and assessing the condition of the tanks themselves. Spoke with the manufacturers, they saw nothing wrong with our process or why this occurred, but we're still doing root cause analysis to see what happened. They have to be repaired for proper operation. The headworks of the facility, I've been pushing this one out for a number of years, but this is required. This is what got us dinged by the EPA, was that this facility needs to be upgraded to pump more water, and we were currently using a temporary bypass pump in that location, which they agreed to but did not agree to. So it's one of those odd situations where they, like we were doing. So, the cost if we have to replace that system is around twenty million. The design will take about two years, so it's a longer term capital project. The aeration basins at the plant need to be upgraded. The work that was done on them is between fifteen and eighteen years old now. The aeration heads have to be replaced periodically. That's just part of the operation. The old, well, the ionized reduction numbers, this is to remove stormwater from the sanitary sewer system to reduce its impact at Messerly. This has been budgeted for a number of years. This is listed in the consent order as well as a requirement. The old filter building at Highland Avenue ended up with some structural issues, which y'all heard about several months ago. Just really, the beams need to be shored up and some of the roof needs to be replaced. The current price estimate for that was five point five, and we were not aware that that was the existing issue. Highland is going through filter upgrades right now. I put eight million dollars for those filter upgrades. Just so y'all know, we were budgeting one million dollars a year for those, have been for the last ten years. They have come in at two point three million apiece due to tariffs. Some of the parts come from Mexico, some come from Canada, and additional cost increases through the routine contractors. So, what is going on in the business? We're seeing cost escalations mainly around materials, somewhat around labor from contract operations of around two X. So we're seeing prices on pipe that are substantially higher than they have been. Discussing this with the manufacturers, they have a variety of excuses for it, but nonetheless, the material costs are being passed on to us and resulting in higher infrastructure costs. Additionally, we're seeing a higher increase in asphalt, which has always been somewhat volatile. As you know, the price tends to go up and down depending on what the oil market's doing. However, as we do more and more road cuts, and obviously the motoring public doesn't like to see new roads cut, we don't either. We try to get on those cuts as quickly as possible, and the costs have been, it's about forty percent higher than they have been over the last two years. Energy increased about ten percent, and our chemical costs have increased about eight percent. And so we treat a lot of water, we use a lot of chemicals, and so those costs continue to climb. So what am I asking for? So the, y'all scheduled a four and a half percent rate increase. Historically, it's been three percent for about the last ten years. Last year, y'all approved a four and a half percent that was targeted around servicing the bond debt for the seventy-five to eighty million dollars that we borrowed. The four and a half percent was supposed to generate enough capital to allow us to complete those bond projects and have enough working capital to move forward with the other project requirements that we have. We're now seeing that inflation has eaten that, and so I am back today. In order for us to operate and complete the capital projects we had originally scheduled would require about an eight and a half percent annual rate increase over the next five years. I will request that, but I think it's probably not likely. I would ask that y'all consider a six and a half percent rate increase in this coming year. Every percent rate increase generates around a million dollars in revenue, and that would generate around two million extra with our goal being coming out of the next two to three year period with additional four to six million in capital cushion for things that break in the night. What is the effect on a customer's bill at three thousand gallons a month? You know, basically, you're seeing an incremental rate increase for every percent of around sixty-two cents per month. So, four dollars and six cents would be the net effect with a six and a half percent rate increase. The average bill for a customer with three thousand gallons of usage right now is sixty-two forty-one a month. So I recognize I'm asking for something extremely difficult in times when people are struggling. I'm trying to maintain the sustainability and long-term operation of this facility, this division, in a way that y'all need done for the city of Augusta. So I'm asking for this rate increase, and then look forward, I'm also going to talk about tap fees. So our tap fees, and these are the costs to sell you a meter, connect to a water main, connect to a sewer main. They have not been increased materially since either the nineteen eighties or nineteen nineties. We were charging a hundred and twenty-five dollars to move a water meter. That was a, it was conceptually set up to help residential homeowners, so that if they needed to move a meter, it wasn't detrimental to them. However, you know, we were doing commercial meters for a while, we stopped all that about three years ago. We forced the commercial vendors to do it themselves. However, our costs now for meters have gone up substantially. A current tap or one inch tap, five eighths by three quarter meter, we were charging five hundred dollars. Our cost is about six hundred, and so we were losing money on every one of them. That's just selling the meter and the components. So I'm asking for a proposed tap fee of eleven seventy-five for a one inch tap, twelve seventy-five for a one inch meter, one inch tap, and then a two inch tap, an inch and a half meter at twenty-five twenty-five. That is a substantial increase. That is still us operating at a bit of a loss, but it's much closer to recovering the costs than we historically have been. At the bottom of this slide, there is a, a few lines, it's not very clear because I didn't bold it. It says size, agency, and cost. Y'all see that? These are neighboring agencies, and the fees that they charge for a three quarter to one inch tap and meter. Aiken County charges between thirteen sixty and twenty-seven fifty for a three quarter to one inch, which I would be asking, you know, eleven to twelve hundred dollars for. Aiken County, see Columbia County charges seventy-five hundred, twenty-two fifty to seventy-five hundred, depending on whether it's done by a contractor or done by in-house services. North Augusta, five hundred to fifteen hundred, and Athens between three hundred and fifty and almost five thousand. Why is there such a discrepancy? It depends on what you're actually installing, how many lanes you're crossing, whether or not you're performing, or whether a contractor's performing, whether, you know, if, if we do it, our direct costs are around twenty-four hundred dollars for four hours. And so, the rate in the industry right now is between eight and ten thousand. So, you know, there's about a three X multiplier as you would expect for buying it through the industry. I'm still willing to, you know, absorb some of that as a loss, but we need to raise those tap fees to be more commensurate with the work we're doing. Some of those will be simpler, some of those will be harder. Additionally, our miscellaneous fees, we have charged a hundred and fifty dollars per lane of asphalt for as long as I can remember. The asphalt costs alone for a two-foot strip are almost three hundred dollars, so we're losing money per lane on that. Sidewalk cuts, similarly, I'm asking for five hundred a lane for road crossings, three hundred and fifty for sidewalk cuts, three hundred for relocating a water meter, reducing the meter size, the same thing, three hundred plus meter cost, et cetera. The three other areas at the bottom, I'm asking for a change. After-hours cutoff on for cutoff, we asked the, anybody that wants an after-hours cutoff to post a hundred dollar deposit on that or fee on that. If it ends up being an issue that we end up resolving later, we will credit them, but we're dispatching a lot of people after hours trying to turn water back on when people get paid on Fridays. Normal, normal things, but it seems to be increasing. We're asking to increase our fire flow fees from a hundred and fifty to five hundred, again, based strictly on cost recovery. And the last item is meter or ERT damage. Our number one call we get is when we are called to, "My meter's not working," and we get to the site and somebody has snatched the reading device out of the meter. And sometimes that's lawnmowers, people hit it, hit the thing, sometimes people pick them up and sling them, and sometimes people snatch them out. And so there's a theory that if it doesn't read, I don't get billed this month, and it is the number one call we get. So, the first one, we are willing to say, there was a mistake made by somebody, they lifted, tossed the meter lid, something like that, didn't realize it was connected. After that, I'm asking for three hundred dollars plus the cost of the meter in the ERT. So I want that to be as disincentive to repetitive damage of our equipment. For our commercial and fire line tap fees, again, stop, or you want me to? So, commercial fees, charging cost plus about twelve percent for the meters. It's when we sell a meter, we don't do commercial taps, they're done by the contractors. It's extremely common in the business because our lead times are longer for these larger taps. Anything bigger than two inch is considered a large meter. Technically, we kind of consider two inch large meter as well, but three inch and larger are large meters. I'm no longer even want to have a price sheet because they vary so much depending on when we purchase them. I just want to ask that we do the cost plus fifteen percent. That way, I'm not guessing the price of an eight inch or ten inch meter. We don't sell a lot of them. We sold, I think, six or eight of them last year. So, but basically, asking, asking for those. We'll talk a little bit, you know, we don't, see if I even put a piece in here, I did not. We don't charge impact fees, and that is a decision that was made a long time ago by previous commissions. Different agencies around us that are driven by heavy development charge, you know, up to a hundred thousand dollars in impact fees for, for eight inch connections. They vary. We don't do that, we recover our revenue through our rate. And again, that was a decision that was made a long time ago to encourage development knowing that we would recover it over time through water sales. We have the capability to treat a lot of water, we sell a lot of water, we have a big industrial base, we tried to, to act that way. I, I would say that we're not completely built out, but we're heavily developed. I would say that we're not completely built out, but we're heavily developed, and impact fees would have some positive impact on the bottom line, but would not be as substantial as we would probably think. So I'm asking a lot, and so how am I going to be accountable for what I'm asking for? Y'all know we use CityWorks extensively, around 6,500 work orders annually out of our two biggest divisions, CNM and metering. I will present those reports to y'all. We've talked about this, Ms. Allen and I, and we are prepared to begin re-reporting on the monthly metrics. The concern I have is that I can produce metrics on anything that is important to me, but I need information that's important to y'all. And so, you know, when you say, "I would like to have reports on these components," Ms. Allen and I have had conversations. I'm just putting it out there as part of our accountability for asking for this rate increase, and you say, "What are we doing?" We'll be able to demonstrate that. We can now, I just don't produce those reports for y'all. So our monthly operating report, we are updating the vehicle tracking for our fleet. I'm working with risk management on this as that contract expires to make sure that you can see our vehicles in real-time in CityWorks, so that there's one dashboard, you'll be able to tell who's driving the vehicle, as well as which work orders they are carrying around right now, so that we will be able to dispatch work much faster. That's been ongoing for about a year, but because the current GPS contract has been expiring, we've pushed this out a little bit. And then I would say with this ask, we would propose a biannual review, so that in six months, we bring back everything, and you tell me how satisfied you are with what we're doing. So one of the other things I talk about is that AUD is about 320 employees. We cover a lot of ground, and we self-perform a lot of functions that y'all probably don't know about. You know, we've got an extensive customer service group. We do all our own billing, we do all of our own meter reading. On the right there, operating a vacuum truck. While we do occasionally rent those services, we operate four to five trucks at any one day. We run a full-time lab, you know, running water quality samples every day, sometimes seven days a week. Our dispatch operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week. You can call them at any time and send somebody out to look at a problem. Additionally, we do our own repairs. On the right, that's one of our staff actually out there cutting out a broken water main. It's actually sitting too close to a stormpipe, but he's going to offset it and make it work. That is real-time repairs. We had four repairs last weekend, this weekend, there were only two. Our heavy sort of facilities division machines its own components, works on the big rotors, on the equipment, rewinds electric motors in-house for us. Saved over the last two months, self-performed work that saved us over a quarter of $1 million. So again, the type of work we do is difficult. I ask you to consider the staff as we move forward. You know, it's a 2-inch jet of water in the dark, in the cold. Got to contain that, got to control it. This is a really great video, but I couldn't show the video. But this is the crews out there fixing a blow-off of a tap in the middle of the night. You know, got it controlled, got it jetting, removed the tap, put a vacuum hose on it, got the water out of the system, made the repair. And most of that happens while y'all are sleeping and don't know about it. So that's my story. Wore my tie for it, so we'll see how we do. Anybody have any questions?
Yes, sir. There's some colleagues in the queue. Chair recognizes Commissioner from the second, Commissioner Stacy Pulliam.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Thank you for your presentation, Director Bynes. Very enlightening, as always.
Thank you.
My first question, for the vacancy positions, the 50 positions, and this is either to you or to Administrator Allen. If those 50 positions are not filled, what happens to the money that's allocated to those positions?
It stays in our fund balance.
Okay.
So it's enterprise funds, so the funds stay in there. Typically, there's an offset in capital costs. So if I have to repair a roof on a building, replace air conditioners, upgrade a pump, there's usually a net, just about wash for those open positions.
Okay. And so how long have those positions been vacant?
They vary depending on which ones they are. Some of my engineers have been vacant for a year or two. Some of those are constant turnover positions. Some of my lower-end positions, I have difficulty retaining employees because you are working outside in the heat and the cold, and they don't pay as much. You know, they're important to people who want the benefits, and that recognize there's plenty of opportunity in the utilities department, but sometimes it takes time to develop those.
Okay. Are you... Do you know what percentage may have... Of those positions may have been empty for the past five-plus years?
I would say very few. I don't know the exact number. We tend to have people come and stay for a period of time. Usually get really talented employees. The utilities business in general retains people because it's a good job, it's meaningful, you show up to work and know what you're getting. People like it. But I would have to go back and look to specifically answer that. I would say very few.
Okay. If you could go back and get those numbers, that would be great. Thank you. My next question is in regards... It's kind of a combination question, combining the projects with the capital funds, grants, and loans. You mentioned that one of the grants was for lead copper service line inventory, the other one, lead service line replacement. I believe it was the lead service line replacement. You said that even though lead is not thought to be in any of the piping, you may be able to use some or transfer some of that grant funding to other projects. Can you go into a little bit more detail about that?
So not transfer it, but use it in the meter replacement program because inventory and analysis of the meters is allowed. And so we have to do that complete first sweep to clean out the meter boxes. We're going to do a lead check on everything we haven't already done at that time, upgrade the GPS points, make sure that it is what it says it is in our system. That inventory piece is going to be done through that grant. So I know this seems strange, that we declare we have no lead service lines, however, they gave us a grant to replace lead service lines. And that is the way they were set up. There was a lot of money distributed into that program because of the Flint issue. And so there was funding available, and they had some qualifications that allowed us to use it in other areas. In addition, we can replace galvanized services, which we do have a lot of. The issue with it is we have to get approval from the property owner to be on their property. That is a program that we're still spinning up, that other agencies around the state have the same issues. There's a legal issue with being on the customer's property and replacing their pipe. So it's difficult.
And I remember we had this conversation prior to Hurricane Helene, because I believe there was a deadline. So there was certain addresses or certain areas, quadrants, that you all went out and tested, and then after that testing, you pretty much deemed based off of those addresses that there was probably not any. So have you all dug deeper into that?
We have done. We submitted the statistical analysis, which was an approved method by the state, by this one vendor. We submitted their package. We cleared everything based on a statistical sampling of the number of connections, and it came back clear. We then followed up with individual checks in certain areas where we had some questions. We found none. In this particular case, the meter replacement program will check everything. And if we find it, we will have to declare it, and we'll be back up here having a different conversation. But again, to our knowledge, unless it was a one-off by a home builder from out of town back in the 20s, none of us know of it.
Okay. And so what's the deadline for that?
That deadline that we discussed had passed last October, which was met. This current one, I believe it's two to three years to spend the funds.
Okay.
I'll have to get that firm number for you.
Okay. Last question on your projects. The Highland Avenue project, is that going to include some of the flooding that's being experienced on Walden Drive as well?
These are specific to the plants.
Okay.
So the Highland Avenue is the old filter building. It's got some structural steel issues that caused some buckling of the roof panels. That is going to be shored up. Roof panels will be replaced. The filter upgrades are just routine. We have 17 filters at that plant. You could replace a filter every year, and in 17 years, you would start over again. They just... They wear like anything. It's... You wouldn't think it, but they do.
Okay. So all of these are facility projects. Are there any ongoing projects for flooding?
There are not. We're not specifically targeting flooding in this, except the INI reduction. We will... We're doing limited investigation right now, looking for cross-connections, and you and I have discussed this, that, you know, sometimes when we fix water that gets into the sewer system, it can exacerbate flooding issues. So we're trying to be, you know, make sure we know what we're looking at and how the best way to solve it might be set up. And Dr. Malik and I have worked together on this for years, years and years. We generally know if we disconnect this pipe here and it's in this area, it's going there.
Okay. And the Turpin Hill 2 area, we met prior... It was probably around October to December 2023 timeframe, and I know that a flooding study was being conducted. So in instances like that, where there is ongoing flooding, where can I expect to see those projects?
I would say that's a... Dr. Malik and I will have to work together on the flooding projects, and we would want to partner anything we receive through SPOST with capital funds from utilities, so that as I'm moving through, separating anything we find from a sewer perspective, we would have an avenue for it in storm, but specific storm projects aren't addressed in this request. This is strictly water and sewer.
Okay. So we'll have that conversation here shortly.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Pulliam. Check recognizes Commissioner Francine Scott from the ninth.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Mayor Johnson, I would like to ask Director Bynes a couple of questions, please.
Yes, ma'am. Please proceed.
Director Bynes, Slide 4. Talk the third from the bottom about meter replacements. I get several calls, and I'm sure your staff probably tell you about them, about meters and meters not working. Would this help eliminate some of those calls?
Absolutely, because we're going to a cellular read meter that reads every hour and uploads four times a day, so that every four hours, I'll get the latest hourly read from everybody the last four hours or six hours. And so what that will do is give us the ability to instantly flag or every day flag meters that are having issues. And of the... We've probably got 750 of them deployed right now, maybe 800. We currently go through those lists, and if we see leaks, we notify the property owner. And to date, most everybody's been happy. We had one person that was angry that we contacted him. He said, "Your toilet appears to be running all night." We would like to tell you. But we will have much finer-grain control, and we will be able to resolve those issues in days instead of months.
Okay, thank you. Slide number five, projects. And you mentioned consent orders. Are all of these within the consent orders or just the one that you mentioned about Highland Avenue?
Just the ones that are the primary clarifiers, the INI reduction, the three in the middle, digesters 4 and 5, the headworks, and the eration basins are going to be functional requirements of our permit. We can't not fix those, but they're not listed specifically in the consent order. The INI reduction and the primary clarifiers are.
Two more, Mayor Johnson. Slide 7, about the 6.5...
Yes, ma'am.
And this increase starting in January? Is it...
That would be correct.
Okay. And one final question, and Mr. Oliver asked me to ask you this, Robert Oliver, about changing out, moving from the septic tanks to piping in with the city. Do we have an estimate when we will start that, or this is something that we have to look at at another time?
We're going to have to revisit that because, again, the funds that we have available are being pulled back into some of these capital issues, specifically, let's talk about the embankment repair at $19 million. If we were to be able to get some of that funding back through FEMA, it would free it up for other projects. But that is a funding that was issued for, you know, system work that we're now having to use a specific component of the water system, which is our water supply. And so if we were to receive reimbursement from FEMA for that, we would have funding available to do other projects, but we will have to have that conversation at that time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Johnson.
Thank you, Commissioner from the ninth. Chair recognizes Commissioner from the fifth, Commissioner Don Clark, you have the floor.
Hey, good morning, Director Bynes. And I appreciate the tie. I like the tie. Good job.
Red black.
All right. Hey, got a couple of questions. So when it comes to the real-time tracking, is that something that Ms. Walker's team, 311, I'm sorry, 311, will they have access to that as well?
They will be able to see it. So let me say real quick, currently, we have a GPS tracking system that'll show vehicles on the map. The difference is, it does not have what we call an API, which is just the ability for the other computers to talk to it. And so I can't directly import it into my CityWorks. And my staff use CityWorks as their go-to platform. And so they want to pull up their work order map, see what's on it, and where the vehicles are.
Yeah. And the only reason I asked about it, I know a lot of companies use real-time tracking, you know. I think one of the prevalent ones is like Safe Flight or something like that. Gives customer access to be able to see when their technician's in route or otherwise. I was asking specifically for 311, so if they are getting calls, they could say, "Hey, your technician's out, on the way," and all that kind of stuff.
Oh, sure. Yeah, no, they'll be able to view it. It won't be directly in the Motorola, but they have access to CityWorks.
Okay. Let me, again, I know you and I had spoken about this before. At one point in time, previous commissioners had made a decision about a $10 tap. Is that still in effect, or have we... Is that grandfathered out?
No, we still do the sanitary sewer connection program, where we connect them into the existing sewer system. That's still... It's not as heavily used. We probably go through a few a month now. But it's still available.
Yeah. And with that process as a whole... So I know you all are actually going through the process of upgrading some of our systems that are well overdue, for sure, and getting folks off of septics. What's the process? Because I know previous conversations we've had, there's been folks that have chosen not to tap in and just stay on septic, and then, you know, some that have. Give me the kind of pros and cons to that.
Sure. The... We spent in 2000 to 2010, you know, multi-millions of dollars putting sewer in areas that didn't have sewer. And the compliance rate is actually a bit higher than I thought. I don't have the specific metrics. I'll have to run that report, and I'll bring it back to you. You know, for the residents that are in that area, I would look back at the mandatory tie-on clauses that were involved at that time, even if you phased their costing to get them on, even if the city paid and then put them on the system and then phased the cost, because we really need full compliance in order to justify the work that was done and expanding it into other areas. You know, it doesn't make sense if we don't have full compliance in the others.
Right.
So I'll take a look at that. I have... It's been probably two years since I've reviewed those documents, but they weren't as bad as I thought they were originally in my brain. So I'll get your report on that.
Now, when it comes to that, and this may be something that you or maybe even the attorney could assist with, is there ordinance in place that kind of dictates, you know, how that's supposed to happen? If it's, you know, hey, after a certain period of time, it's going to be mandated? How does that work?
It doesn't exist. It was originally set up in the bond covenants of the first issue that the city would promote a mandatory tie-on, you know, program. I don't think it was articulated further than a statement somewhere to that.
But it never came to fruition.
Commissioner, I believe it actually is an ordinance about having to tie in to sanitary sewer, but I'll confirm that. It's an issue that's come up, I think we discussed last Tuesday. So I'll be happy to follow up on that and provide it to you.
Thank you. Yeah, because, I mean, I think a lot of this, you know, even with the $10 tap piece, it's like anything, right? Over time, it's going to really dissipate and lose sight, and then for folks coming in new, may not even know about it. And then if we do have an ordinance that's stating some level of mandate that they have to do it after a certain period of time, that's also something that we're going to have to ensure that folks are educated about as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Chair recognizes Mayor Pro Tim Wayne Gilf.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, my question is going to be directed at Director Westbys. Mr. Bynes, as far as the... On your projects here, any of them want or they all need it?
These are all needs. You can push certain things out, but you can't push them out forever.
Right. How old is our sewage plant?
Originally built in, I think, '68, and then got an upgrade and put the 72... Originally built in, I think, 68 and then got an upgrade and the, with the 72 Clean Water Act, like everything did. It was originally a primary treatment plant. We added secondary. Over the years, we've upgraded it. The last upgrade was circa 08. That added the North Aeration Basins and some additional piping. So even the newest components are 2008.
Right. I understand even when the storm hit last year, our system failed, it didn't fail, it just wasn't up to par as far as could handle any of this impact of all this additional water as well. That's the reason why I guess the EPA or overflow.
They noted it, but they didn't say much about it. The 10 inches of rain was one of those, you know, it's outside the 100 year.
Right.
That's kind of an operating point, which we don't, don't plan for.
Okay. I do understand we got a good company out there at ESG that tries to do a lot of preventive maintenance, but they can only do so much with the funding that they have or the funding that the utilities have. As far as the, I understand the need for having all these fixed and replaced naturally. As far as the tie-in to the septic tank for $10, you know, it was a great idea at the time, but it's, it's not cost effective. No different than hooking up the meters, you know, we got to get up to speed on it. You have power companies that will install water heaters, different components in the house, but just add it to the bill. That way, that might be an avenue that we need to look at, you know, that way the homeowner could go, I can't afford it now, but if it's done on a monthly bill, I can, which would be a great idea. As far as this embankment repair, you said we should find out by the end of the year. It's been a little bit over a year since the storm hit. Where are we at with this company, the T-Rex company, looking into this? Because that's, that's a major hit of $19 million.
Certainly the, when you say which company, you're talking about the Tetra Tech Evaluation or Schnabels?
Tetra Tech.
Tetra Tech. Tetra Tech has been working with us, trying to get me to produce more documentation that's required as part of this. Some of it I have produced, but then they will follow up and say, I need additional, like, do you own the canal? You know, well, yes, we own the canal. Can you prove how you acquired the canal? Well, yes, we can, but it's, it's been that type of back and forth, which has been pushed by some of the people at FEMA. We've turned over some of the management staff and they're now trying to expedite the review of it. Until this point, they've been hesitant to want to fund it. And like, there was a reason, but I believe it's, it's a, you know, disingenuous or erroneous, I disagree with it. But the facility itself is so unique that it makes it difficult for the agencies to really know how to address it.
Right.
I, I believe that through and through, they, everyone looks at it and thinks through their jurisdictional list and they really just come up blank with, you know, and if it doesn't fall in your jurisdiction, you can't just work on it. So that's been the issue since I think the very beginning.
With the man hours in responding to FEMA, et cetera, are we being, will keep an account of that as well?
Yes.
To get all the information together for them and the research?
Yeah, they, I mean, I owe them some additional information. We received one of the designations or determinations last week on the canal. Some of it we're just not going to agree on, but some of it we're hoping we can meet with the appropriate, like specialty staff they have to try to, to come to a resolution, even if it's a, you know, partial payment. That 19 million is the estimate to fix the, the entire embankment. You know, we might have to select areas that are higher priority. There's a lot of that that's still working itself out as we go through the final design.
Well, to keep from causing more damage to the banks with the trees up there naturally, the counterweight of the tree, will it be better just to cut it off at the root for?
We have cut hundreds of trees. We will have to further cut trees that are there now, once we pull the root balls of the ones that were previously cut. And I will remind the commission that we were operating under direction from FERC, who is our regulatory agency, to cut anything six inches and smaller, but not to clearcut all the trees on the canal, because you would then have to remove all of their root balls. And that would be a complete embankment rebuild, which is where we are now. But we were operating under selective removal through the authority of FERC prior to the hurricane. And again, the trees have been there 100 years. We were getting them as they became an issue. Unfortunately, a lot of them became an issue at the same time.
Right. Well, Wes, I definitely appreciate you doing this presentation and sprinkling the cost throughout, you know, from your whole division, from installing meters to seeing what it costs to do all these repairs. So hopefully it's 50 million, 500, we get the 19 million back from FEMA.
That would be, that would be great.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Administrator.
Receiving this information.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Director Bynes, I have a question. Can we go back to slide, let's see, slide three, please, the budget overview?
Yes, sir.
And this may be a question from Tim Scherer. I know we, we grant a percentage of the funds that are derived from water and sewer back to the taxpayer. Is that correct?
We, we do fund transfers through payment in lieu of taxes, payment in lieu of franchise fees and indirect costs, as well as a risk management allocation.
Do you have any idea about what those fees are annually, what, what they're projected to be for fiscal year 2026?
Pilot is 1.7 pile-off. In lieu of franchise fees is 6.5. Indirect cost transfers are 1.8. And the risk management is 840,000.
All right. How, how will these proposed fee increases affect what we deliver back to the taxpayer?
And so the tax portion comes off of the asset values. Is that correct? Go ahead.
Director Scherer.
The, Wes is correct. The tax portion is based off of fixed assets. The pile-up payment in lieu of franchise fees, that is 6% of his billed, billed revenue. So that would, excuse me. The franchise fee amount would increase to back to the general fund.
It would increase?
Yes.
Okay. Any idea about how, just based on his estimates, have we, have we modeled that just to see?
I have not modeled that yet, no.
Okay. All right.
Maybe 200,000.
200,000. All right. That's what I need to know. All right. Thank you, guys. Don't see any colleagues in the queue for any further questions or discussions. Director Bynes, thank you for the presentation.
Thank y'all for receiving it this morning.
All right. Madam Administrator, who's up next?
All right. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the governing body. We will now go to our next one. All right. So the other item on our agenda today is to discuss the budget for the Richmond County Correctional Institution, better known as our RCCI. As you can see, this slide has become pretty familiar. This is of course, our original proposal for how we can close the $21 million gap between our projected revenue and our projected expenditures. Last week, we discussed that transit was able to identify 884,00820 in expenditures. So we have updated that row here and you can see that up there. And so now we know everything else here is under discussion and in, of course, in flux. But I wanted to remind you of our overall plan. Today, we're going to focus on RCCI. We'll discuss HCD and revisit the departments and NGO reductions on November 6. During his initial budget presentation to finance and administration, Warden Joseph presented a plan to reduce RCCI costs. We have challenged him to press harder and try to find $1 million in cost savings from RCCI's general fund subsidy. As you will hear, Warden and our staff have made a valiant effort to do that, but we have determined that we will not quite hit the mark. However, we do have some savings to bring to you and an overall cost benefit analysis to discuss. First, just some quick background information on RCCI. As you have heard from Warden Joseph in the past, RCCI's current facility was built in 1963 and it still operates as one of 21 county prisons in Georgia. That means its inmate population is made up of state prisoners. Again, just for public knowledge, it's only state prisoners, not our local inmate count, which happened to be at Webster Detention Center. That means its inmate population is made up, again, of state prisoners. Augusta chooses to house these prisoners because we benefit from their inmate labor. Our current contract, state contract, is for 230 inmates. Even though the population might vary a little from day to day, that 230 is the number we start with for our budget analysis. As you can see, we have 73 full-time positions at RCCI. RCCI is budgeted to have 27 inmate work crews in service. 24 of those crews will be led by certified officers in RCCI and have five to six inmates each. Three of the crews are led by civilian supervisors paid by engineering and fire, and those supervisors can take out crews of two or three inmates. As you can see here, RCCI ideally provides crews for engineering maintenance, cemetery maintenance, central services and the fire department. We also supply crews for GDOT, the Augusta Canal Authority and the Board of Education, who reimburse us for the officer cost. However, despite being budgeted for 27 crews, RCCI continues to struggle with vacancies. Currently, eight of these officer positions are vacant and four of the current officers are still in training or on medical restriction. So today, we have a maximum of 15 crews in service on any given day. If any officer is out sick or detailed officers have to be pulled back into the building to meet required staffing there, the number of crews in service is lower than that. If you have more detailed questions about how these crews function later on, I will of course defer to our Warden Joseph, who's here today. There are two primary cost areas in the RCCI budget for us to consider. The overall cost, excuse me, of RCCI and the cost for the RCCI cemetery crews. We will not consider costs associated with the inmate store, which of course is self-sustaining. The total project cost to operate RCCI as it is today is just over 5.9 million dollars for 2026. As with the Webster Detention Center, we have projected increases to the RCCI budget for prisoner medical costs and food service. After other offsetting supply cuts, the overall budget has grown by about 56,000 for 2026. That gives us the 5.9 million dollar total. When we divide that 5.9 million for our 230 inmates, we have a full average daily cost of $70 and 46, $70 and 46 cents per inmate for 2026. Now that the entire $70 cost is not paid by Augusta, the state pays a per diem cost per prisoner house. As you know, Augusta joined in the lobbying effort to have that per diem rate increased this year, and we are very thankful to our state delegation and of course, our lobbyists for their work on our behalf. The state increased this rate from $24 per day to $30 per day in this year's budget, which is a big jump that has gone to generate some cost savings for our 2026 budget. We also received the reimbursement from GDOT and the Board of Education to help offset the cost for the detailed officers that led their crews. That is budgeted at 85,000 for 2026 or about $1 per inmate per day overall. That leaves $39.45 in estimated cost to Augusta per day, per inmate for 2026. Since many of the crews at RCCI work for engineering on stormwater related maintenance, the stormwater reimburses the general fund for the cost of some of the detail officers. That amount is budgeted at $290,000 or about $3.45 per inmate. Any remaining RCCI costs are borne by the general fund, which is estimated to be about $35.99 per inmate per day. The total cost to Augusta with the new state revenue is expected to be about 3.3 million for 2026. Again, that includes general fund and stormwater. As mentioned, Warden Joseph brought recommendations for reducing RCCI's budget to his budget work session. We asked him to scrub his budget again to look for savings opportunities and he has worked with us, which I truly do appreciate. He has proposed eliminating seven positions, five which are currently vacant. You can see the estimated savings for those positions on this slide. And I'll let Warden Joseph speak to the operational impact that these cuts would have in just a moment. Since some of these duties would have to be reassigned to other staff, he is requesting that we include a 5% increase for two positions that would be taking on that extra work. The total net savings for these positions, if all taken, is projected to be just under 374,000. I will note that we are budgeting 100% of savings here for the vacancies, just to keep things clear in our discussion. In addition, we have discussed that the state per diem has increased by $6. The original proposed budget did not include the entire increase amount, as we were looking at scenarios that might have reduced the inmate population. I will explain more about that in just a moment. But with our current recommendation, I've asked finance to add back the full amount of projected revenue for 220 inmates. That still allows some room for population fluctuations throughout the year, but it's more in keeping with that we realistically expect. The change adds $309,000 to our revenue projection, bringing the total deficit reduction offset to 682,650. So not quite the million dollars we shopped for, but still a significant amount of savings. There are also other options that have been considered. We with Warden Joseph have also looked at other paths to try to save funds for RCCI. We did some extensive modeling of what would happen if we tried to reduce our inmate population by 60, 70 or even 80 inmates. And after looking at all the projected operational savings versus the loss of the state reimbursements for those inmates, the overall net effect would likely be a cost to Augusta in excess of an additional $150,000. This is because even if we were able to close a whole dormitory in RCCI, the fixed cost to operate the building and to provide required staffing around the clock would not decrease proportionately. In other words, we do not lose a full 30% of our fixed cost if we give up 30% of our inmates. So we would lose more in state per diems than we would be able to give up in expenses. It is to Augusta's advantage in the current facility to keep the inmate population higher so that we bring in more state revenue. Now, I will point out that this conversation changes when we are considering the cost of a new facility for RCCI. If we continue down that road, we do need to consider reducing the population at that time so that we could potentially build a similar facility. That would be an opportunity to reduce some of the respective fixed costs. But for the status quo for 2026, if we are keeping RCCI in the current facility, we do not recommend an inmate reduction. The other option Warden Joseph brought to us is to reduce the number of detail officers and thus work crews. As you heard earlier, RCCI is struggling with persistent vacancies. Warden proposed eliminating the cemetery crew operating cost as a cost savings and redirecting those offices back to engineering. However, Augusta would either have to further reduce our level of service in the cemeteries or find another way to deliver the services. That would likely eliminate or exceed any cost savings, as you will hear in a moment. Instead, we need to work on a plan to address the current vacancies so that we can fully utilize the inmate labor available. We also have only educated guesses about what contracting cost for the cemetery would be. I know Commissioner Pulliam asked us to do comparisons. It's really, all you can do is do some estimates for what it would be to actually do the, the actual contracting services. I recommend that we proceed to develop a scope of work to bid out the cemetery maintenance and put that on the street so that we can make a true apples-to-apples comparison about the most efficient way to deliver the service. If it would actually be a cost savings to contract it out, we will make the change during the year. And if the current model is more cost effective, we will try to maximize on it. So let's look at the RCCI cost benefit analysis. Now stepping away from the 2026 budget for a moment and thinking more big picture about RCCI. There has been a lot of discussion on a policy level about whether you should keep, continue to maintain RCCI or consider closing the facility. Earlier this summer, you asked us to work with RCCI to look at the actual service performed by inmate crews. The goal was to compare how much it would cost us if we had to pay for equivalent service. The goal was to compare how much it would cost us if we had to pay for equivalent service from in-house city employees or from contractors. This analysis was a little more challenging than you might, than you might expect because RCCI tracks their inmate crews on paper sheets, and we only had data available from the end of 2023 on. So Staff and Finance and Administration, as well as RCCI, had to do a lot of data entry to compile the information, and this has been a very iterative process as RCCI has been pulling numbers together. We use 2024 because that is the best data that RCCI has, and it was also with a higher staffing level for RCCI. So you see more of the potential if we were closer to actually being fully staffed. We had initial results early in the summer and then provided you with the full analysis a few weeks ago. Warden and his team then found additional log sheets, which we actually have incorporated. We have also updated the information from the 2026 budget, and we, um, certainly appreciate your patience with this process because it has been a process. The updated numbers we are bringing you today are the most accurate that we think are available. We looked at how many hours of inmate labor were performed by each crew, estimated the inmates' work at a seven point five hours a day. We determined how many city employees that time would equate to, round up after accounting for holidays, sick time, all the things that normal employees get. We then looked at equivalent existing positions in departments to come up with the cost estimate for in-house staff. For contractors, again, I want to say upfront that it's much harder to do a true comparison because any given bid package may come in higher or lower than what we may expect. We also do not usually price our existing contractors by the hour, so there is even more estimating involved. But we consulted with departments and looked at existing contracts to come up with generous estimates of about thirty dollars per hour for painting and exterior, interior work and about forty-five dollars per hour for mowing and outside maintenance. Keep in mind that all of these numbers assume an hour of inmate labor is equivalent to an hour of staff time or contractor time. There are different opinions about whether staff would be willing to perform the ditch work that RCCI inmates do or about whether staff or contractors might deliver higher-quality work or take better care of our equipment. We have heard all of them, I can assure you. And those are valid considerations but hard to quantify, so they are not considered here. We also did not factor in any equipment cost savings, which would be a factor if we moved to contractors, but there are too many unknowns, of course, right now to include. The net result of this analysis was that rounding up to full positions, we would need about sixty-three employee laborers to perform the same work as the RCCI crews in 2024. With salaries and benefits, that cost is about two point nine million. The rough estimate cost for the contractors is significantly higher at about four point eight million. Again, the contracted numbers are much harder to estimate, so please do not use these numbers as authoritative, but we wanted to provide an order of magnitude for comparison. There is a lot of detail on this slide for your reference, but I'm going to move to the next so you can see actually the bottom line. And if we look at actually what we're, uh, paying for each inmate per hour, we're looking at about thirty to thirty-two dollars an hour that if you would pay an inmate is another way to look at this. So, the current fiscal year 2026 budget for RCCI, including the stormwater contribution and the additional state revenue offset we mentioned, is three point three million. At that cost, there would likely be a cost savings for us to hire equivalent in-house staff. If you agree to the proposed cuts we discussed earlier, the 2026 net cost to Augusta decreases to about two point nine eight million. That makes it basically break even with hiring employees when we just look at salaries and benefits. The employees will use the same equipment currently provided by the user departments. We would also like to have additional operating costs for uniforms, vehicles, phones, et cetera. Since these staff would be embedded into existing work units, it is difficult for us to put an accurate estimate on those standalone costs. But the RCCI cost may be in the range of fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars cheaper than in-house employees would be. Again, we are not looking at service quality, just the respective costs. For contractors, again, our rough estimate is that it would be significantly more expensive. We know that the difference might be somewhat less than shown here if we considered the cost of replacing equipment, which contractors would provide themselves, for themselves. The amount varies year to year, as you know, but I think it is reasonable to assume contractors would be more expensive overall. Of course, we would not know until we actually bid the service out. That is, again, why I'm suggesting that we start with bidding the cemetery maintenance portion this year, which would give us some real numbers. All that said, the bottom line is, with our updated information from RCCI, it is slightly better than break even to keep RCCI rather than in-house staff, and we would think it's cheaper to keep RCCI than to contract out same services. Now, you may be surprised that these numbers are actually as close as they are. Intuitively, it seems like RCCI's model of inmate labor should be much cheaper than hiring employees. People in the community have that perception, and I had that perception, um, coming into this office. The problem is that we have to pay for the upkeep of many more inmates than we actually are able to utilize. As we discussed, those fixed costs don't change, but our crew usage does. And the fewer crews we are able to send out, the worse of a deal RCCI becomes for this government. Ultimately, the future of RCCI is a policy decision for this governing body. I will close this morning by just touching on a few of the policy considerations. If you choose to pursue closing RCCI, we would likely have somewhat high operating costs to provide the same services as you just saw. On the other hand, we would avoid the capital cost of constructing a new RCCI facility, which is currently estimated to cost about twenty-five million dollars. This is a major SPOS expense we could potentially avoid. Currently, there is eleven million dollars remaining in our previous SPOS. If you choose to maintain RCCI, we must continue to find ways to increase our inmate deployment as much as possible. We are losing money on our investment in RCCI when we don't use inmate crews to their full capacity, and it hurts performance in other departments when the crews that they're expecting are not available for work. So I know you've heard many of the departments come before you, and we've asked them to provide service levels and things that they're getting, um, and many of them have told you that they have group, crews assigned to them, but they cannot give you an actual schedule because they cannot estimate whether or not those crews are going to be there every day. So it's very difficult for them to provide any schedules for their work because they're not guaranteed that they're going to receive a crew that day. In addition, our current arrangements with GDOT, the Board of Education, and the Canal Authority need to be reexamined. Those agencies do contribute toward the cost of their detail officers, but as you see, we are paying other costs for those inmates, too. We need to renegotiate those arrangements this year to come closer to full cost recovery or look at redeploying those crews to Augusta businesses. So with that, I'll return to the immediate 2026 budget considerations and invite any questions.
Thank you, Madam Administrator, for that presentation. Chair recognizes Commissioner Stacy Pulliam.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Thank you so much, Ms. Allen. For me, you know, because I consistently ask the question to see what that breakdown is, and I appreciate you digging deeper into those numbers. And just in everything we do, when we dig deeper into the numbers and do those five-plus, ten-plus-year evaluations, it gives us a truer read of the numbers, so I greatly appreciate that. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Some of my questions are, as we take into account actually building out the facility, was there any type of evaluation done to see how much that would spread over a certain number of years? So if I'm relating it to a mortgage, like thirty years, after thirty years, this is my break-even point. So even with that cost included, if we break that down in a yearly basis as we collect that through SPOS, what would be the difference between that, the in-house employees, and the contractors? Did that make sense?
So I think one of them is a capital cost, and one is an operational cost. So the, the cost for the additional employees would be more of operational because what we'll probably do is reallocate other resources to assist, whereas the actual building, if I'm understanding correctly, is more of the capital. So those would be two separate budgeting sources.
Right, and so although there are two different budgeting sources, my question is because that's still in the, can we go back to the recommendation slide? When you, let me see, which one was that? It was the RCCI cost-benefits analysis, that slide.
This one?
Yes. Yes, mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think that's the correct one. And if Augusta closed RCCI, no, it might be the next one. It's the one towards the end, right before the proposed RCCI reductions. In this slide, it says if Augusta closed RCCI, somewhat higher operating cost for services, and we would avoid the capital cost of a new facility. So although they, right, that one. So although they're coming from different funding sources, it's still a cost.
Yes, ma'am.
So as we are comparing to see which one is going to be a cost savings, be it RCCI, contractors, or in-house employees, I'm saying that's still a cost that's not associated with contractors and in-house employees. Correct? Because it's on the slide as would avoid the capital cost of a new facility. So since we would avoid that cost, if we had in-house employees or contractors, we wouldn't have that cost, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Commissioner Pulliam. Yes, you're right. If, because the in-house staff, we don't know exactly the operating cost, let's say it's a hundred thousand dollars more with phones and vehicles and things like that if we had employees versus RCCI. If we looked at that over time at a hundred thousand dollars a year versus twenty-five million, it, it would never be cheaper to do the building versus that. For contractors, if, if it's maybe a two million dollar a year difference, it would take twelve to thirteen years before it's cheaper to stay with RCCI versus two contractors.
Okay.
Is that what you were asking?
That is. So even if, so even with keeping RCCI and building a new facility, we still come out one top then. Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying the opposite of that, unfortunately. If, if we keep RCCI because of that capital cost
Okay.
for the facility, the operating cost basis is what we looked at, it's slightly cheaper to keep RCCI, but with the capital cost, that twenty-five million, we're never going to make that up with, with savings.
Okay, and so th- then it's going to take a total of what number of years in order for us to absorb that cost?
Um, for in-house staff, that, that like two hundred years, Commissioner, I'm not being funny. I mean, it's, it's very, it's a long time horizon. For contractors, like I said, it'd be twelve to thirteen years.
Okay, and so even with-
Contracting costs are what we expect, which is a big if.
Okay, and so even with the money that we already currently have to go towards that project?
If we do that, it reduces it a little bit. So the estimated cost for the new facility is about twenty-five million, and as Ms. Allen said, we have eleven million of that allocated now. So that drops the new money that hasn't been allocated yet down to about fourteen million.
Okay.
So that would reduce the amount of contracting time as well. I haven't done that number, but it'd be maybe closer to ten, eight to ten years.
Okay.
Uh, uh, on the in-house side, again, it would be cheaper.
Okay.
So that the capital cost is really the big offsetting issue here. It's not the ongoing operations. It's the new facility for RCCI.
Okay, so that fourteen million, you're saying it would take about two hundred years?
I, I haven't done that math. Like, I can't do it real fast.
Okay.
But if we look, I mean, if you think about fourteen million versus a hundred thousand dollars, how long that would take to make up?
And does that include, while we're doing that math, um, I know as we had conversations with RCCI and some of the state delegation, they were talking about different ways that we could possibly offset that fourteen million dollar cost. Was that taken into account as well?
No, the twenty-five million is the, is the estimate that we have right now. As Ms. Allen mentioned, when we talk about reducing the inmate population, that is our opportunity to reduce costs there. It doesn't make sense to do it on an operating basis right now in the new facility because of the fixed cost. But if we were able to reduce the inmate population when we're building a smaller new facility, there is potential that we could bring it down. We're not going to be able to bring it down to eleven million, but we might be able to reduce it somewhat from that twenty-five. That, that's something that they're working with designers on now. And then, of course, there's the request to the state to, uh, give a state funding to help build the facility. I think there's skepticism about whether they're going to do that or not, but that's a request that we can put on the table as well.
The appetite for them helping in any way possible, it seemed like it was definitely there the day of that meeting with RCCI. However, they also made other suggestions. And so as we're taking everything into account, one of the suggestions was that, or one of the offers was where they had inmates that were ac- actually doing like a contract to work. I forgot exactly what the name is, and I'm going to ask Warden Joseph to come up in a moment, if I may, Mayor Johnson, to ask some questions.
Yes, ma'am, you may.
Okay.
If you would make your way to the, uh-
But whoever was, um, Administrator Allen, were you in that meeting that day with RCCI and the state delegation? Okay, yes, ma'am. So do you remember the contract to work where they had the actual inmates that were helping to build the facility?
Yeah. No, sir.
Was, was that the meeting here or was that the meeting actually at RCCI?
At RCCI, yes, ma'am. And we did that tour. Okay, I was like, I wasn't sure if you were there. Okay. So I'm going to redirect my question to Warden Joseph.
So the state has a mobile construction crew?
Yes, sir, that's what it was called. Okay.
For the five inmates that they specialize in building and other projects.
Okay, and so with that mobile construction crew, Administrator Allen, have we looked into that? Because from my understanding, it was going to be a significant, um, cost reduction if we actually did that mobile construction crew, and then they were also gaining skills, which that still adds to recidivism. So making sure that we don't have people that are, you know, repeat offenders, and it's giving them a certain skill set. Is that correct?
A second.
Warden Joseph? Okay. Do we take that into account, or do we?
No, ma'am. Right now, we don't have any respective formal cost to even look at that, but that could be something that could be considered.
Okay, and so I would like to have all of that as well. So the numbers that we have is great, and it's definitely a, a great starting point from where you're at. However, as we're talking about a twenty-five million dollar project, and we know that we have eleven million already, and we have more that needs, um, to, we have more that we need to bring in. Programs like this, the mobile construction program, could save us significantly. But in addition to saving us significantly, we're actually helping individuals gain work skills. And so when they are out, they become, um, I'm going to say even more productive members of society with certain skill sets that they may not have gained otherwise. So I believe that would be, um, something to definitely dig into so that we can make sure we are just looking at every avenue. Next question, and this is for you, Warden Joseph. It was mentioned that some of the, let me see, which page was that on? I apologize. It was mentioned that some of the work crews that were promised, some of the departments feel as though those work crews, they can't necessarily depend upon them. Can you please speak to that?
Right, so all true value is based on the number of inmates we sent out. And I, I came before the commission last year. Commissioners gave us a raise for the salaries of the detail officers, and that helped tremendously. I think that was late spring I came. From summer of last year until this point, we've lost about sixteen officers. And therein lies the problem. So we, and I just could break it down for you. One, we had to arrest, we had personal dealings with inmates, and we had several that left during the course of investigation. We lost two for medical. We had another two that did not get their certification in the allotted period of time. And then we had some that just left for other job, job opportunities. So that's, that's the issue. I'm, I'm totally in agreement with Administrator. Our true value cannot be measured if we're not sending more inmates out, and we can't send the inmates out without officers. So therein lies the problem. So that's, that's- So that's accurate.
Okay, so is it to a point of, I guess I want to measure of how bad is it?
Well, as the Administrator mentioned, right now we are eight short. Eight officers short, detail officers. We have one scheduled to come onboard shortly. But it's, I don't have the magic answer. We could do more as far as recruitment. That's one of the things I think we need to be more aggressive with, especially social media. We do go out to Fort Gordon, we participate in job fairs, we work with HR. But it's a challenge to get employees to do that type of work, and you know, to stay invested.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. Administrator Allen, to what Warden Joseph just said, what could we do? Like with those, and I know you're like, okay, it's a million things we could do. I get that. But what are some suggestions, even as it relates to current law enforcement that we have? You know, not pulling them from any particular place, but I don't, I want to understand how that works. And what we could do to actually try to recruit those eight that we're short. Just like we would any other position, right? When we're putting those out and we're trying to market for those positions, what could be done?
You know what, Commissioner Pulliam, it would probably be, as Warden Joseph stated, more aggressive recruitment. That's probably the only thing that we could do, unless the governing body is willing to increase salaries again to, you know, to entice people to want to apply for those positions. But as we both have stated, and believe me, we have had several conversations, administration and RCCI, about how can we get this to work? How can we get the funding model and everything to make sense? And years ago, as you know, me and Warden both have been here many years, it was very, it made a lot of sense 30 years ago. Because of course, it was a lot of work being done, and it wasn't, the medical cost for the inmates and everything wasn't as high as it is today. They were out there, and it was very cost effective. It made a lot of sense to have it. But now, and I'm not saying it doesn't now, but until we can get that math to, as they say, math, mathing the method to work, it's just not right now, it's no other way to do it because of things have just changed significantly over the years.
But still taking, thank you for that. Still taking out of the equation the building, the facility itself. So act like that doesn't exist. If like $11 million doesn't exist, can we really do that? But act like that part doesn't exist. So just the numbers with the 108, this is, the numbers that you presented on the page where you did the side-by-side comparison of RCCI detail versus full-time employee and the contract costs. On that slide, it's still showing that RCCI was less expensive, is that correct? Am I reading that right?
Yes, is that the page?
Yes ma'am, that's the page. So still RCCI came in at a significant cost difference where they were significantly lower? Correct?
Yes.
Okay, so even if we added in that 8,000 to that 108,578, that's still less than 2,981,000 and 4,775,000? Or am I seeing something wrong?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I think so. The RCCI current cost is not on this slide.
Okay.
That 108,000 is the number of hours we're estimating the crews worked.
Got it.
So the next slide over-
Is the actual cost, okay.
So it is slightly cheaper to do, to keep RCCI as it is versus what we project for in-house employees? But it, you know, it's in the neighborhood, maybe 50,000, 75,000.
So that would still absorb the cost of the 8,000 that they would need. What was the amount that they were asking for the, yeah, 5% increase for additional duties?
Oh yes ma'am, that's built in for the 2026 budget proposal.
Okay.
That is, if I can- Yes, that was for the cuts they're proposing to make this year for this budget. If we reduce the positions that are listed on this slide, the warden has said that some of those duties would have to go to other personnel. And so that is built into the savings here. So we would be saving $8,000 more than this if we didn't do those increases. But that is reasonable to give those staff increases for absorbing additional work.
Okay.
But that's kind of separate from the consideration about the overall value. That's just for these budget cuts here.
Okay, all right. So it still ends up being almost equivalent? You said yes, Ms. Maddie Sue? You're not at the mic, okay. So even with needing what they need to balance out everything, it still ends up being about the same, is that what you're, if you could come back up to the mic?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
If we take the cuts that we're proposing to take this year, then yes. The ongoing operating costs, not considering capital, we think is about equivalent for in-house staff versus current RCCI.
Okay.
But that assumes that we take the budget cuts that we're proposing to take for 2026.
Okay, and you said you think it is. I know we can't put a definitive amount on contractors, why do you think it is? Like why isn't it, yes, this is less than?
So we can model, I'm sorry, we can model employee costs pretty clearly. Because we can say it was this many hours, and then if we did that same with employee, you know, we know how many hours employees work, and we know how much we pay employees. So we can model the personnel costs pretty clearly, that's what's on this slide.
Okay.
We don't know all the other ancillary costs that go with the employees to the dollar. Because if we just add one employee to the fire department, for instance, we will have a cell phone for that person, we might have a slight increase to our uniform costs. Are they going to share a vehicle with someone else? Those other operating cost numbers are a little squishier. So that's why I say 50 to 75,000 is a range. Because we don't know to the penny how much it would cost us for all the other costs that go around an employee.
Okay.
But we can model the personnel costs themselves pretty clearly, and that's what's on this slide.
Okay, and so, yeah, so it's still RCCI comes out on top?
Yes.
Okay, awesome, so that's my thing. So I feel like, or my personal belief is just based off of this presentation, looking at the actual programs that are available for the new facility could prove as helpful. Because it may not in fact be 11 million, especially if we do the mobile construction units. I want to keep, I want to make sure I'm getting that right. The mobile construction units, and see what the buy-in would possibly be from the state. Because sitting in that meeting, it did seem to be some interest. I mean, I can ask the opinions of those that were there, but of course, your opinion is how you viewed the conversation. But I heard that there was a, there was a get-along to, you know, we might be interested in this, tell us exactly what you need. So exploring that could help us to see what that 11 million dollars could possibly be. But those are all of my questions. Thank you, Mayor Johnson.
Thank you, Commissioner Pulliam. Chair recognizes Mayor Protem Wayne Gilfo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question for Warden. Warden, I'm going to miss you at the end of this year, my friend. Thank you for all your service.
Yes sir.
Would you be kind enough to get the Commissioner from the second all the information on that building to build out, the SOPs that you have within your department? So she'll have that on hand, so she'll be able to figure out which direction she would like to take on this. I noticed that we 12 crews short. Last year, actually I-
Actually eight crews short, Commissioner.
Well, I'm looking at 27 from 15, that's 12 in my book.
Right, three of them are civilian. We don't have any patrol over those.
All right. I know that last year, it's a small investment, Mad Administrator, to actually get these crew, the gentlemen or ladies that's over these crews. I mean, anytime that you give somebody a little bit more to oversee, five, six people that's doing basically free labor, it's worth it. Your medical cost doesn't change, your food cost doesn't change. You've still got to pay them whether they sitting in that building or out there cleaning a ditch, is that correct?
That's accurate.
Okay, so I think what we need to do is try to get more aggressive, like you said, on the marketing, on the hiring. But let's, let's go up a little bit. Let's increase to where we can have 27 crews at every given day. What the 27 crews is going to do is going to save us from having to hire or use the contractors that we have on call, or people that we have under contract to go do these things where we could do it at a cheaper labor. There's value with having the crews out there, I know that. We pay anywhere, I think from 9 to 15,000 for a big retention fund. And y'all could save us a lot of money from us having to sub it out. So I do, you know, I do agree with moving, trying to get more aggressive on that. To change the direction of my conversation, Mad Administrator, we're looking at all these departments. Last week, we was looking at other issues that we facing. Well, we are going to look at the line items on the expenditures in this budget.
Not necessarily the respective line items.
Okay, are we keeping the budget flat from last year?
We're doing even more than that because we're asking for that reduction. So less than flat in most cases, sir. Unless it's something that has to be approved, like for the additional staffing of the court and everything for the additional judge.
All right, can we have the finance, intern finance director show us any additional expenditures than what was originally from last year? What was, what we would consider flat, any additional? I was just going through it here a little bit ago. And, you know, 10,000, you know? A hundred, ten hundredths of a million. I'd rather reduce our exposure in which way we can. If you know, I appreciate all the departments that came before us that's willing to reduce to 3%. So if there's any way that we could go through, have the intern tell us things that additional costs, that would be great. And the reason behind it. Because I had one of the gentlemen that was here last week talking about Riverwatch was being increased as far as the maintenance. He said, it still looks the same as what it has been over these past couple of years while we put in more fun into it. You know, we could utilize that money going towards ACE and have them maintain and clean it. So that's how I do it. Thank you, Warden.
If I could to-
Always, yes sir.
Yes sir, if I could to, Mr. Mayor, just for full disclosure, our medical and our food costs are subject for a slight increase for next year. And those are tied to the contracts that we currently have. Just want to make sure that's clear.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Chair recognizes Commissioner Clark from the fifth.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Allen, thank you as always for your transparency. Mr. Warden, I appreciate you as well, just for really kind of digging into this. Interesting thing about this one is historically speaking, this was probably a very popular way of utilizing inmate labor for doing these type of tasks. The challenge we have now, though, is really trying to determine from a cost analysis standpoint, which one is sustainable. And right now, there's a lot of rotating and inconsistent variables in here. Because I think you made a great point. The fact that you're down staff. So if you're down staff, then that limits the amount of teams that we can send out. And I think a lot of us started becoming very aware that the teams that you're sending out aren't just sending out teams to us, but we're sending them to the Board of Education, Canal Authority, Department of Transportation. But Augusta's covering the whole shebang as far as all the costs it takes, correct? Is that a fair statement?
Not necessarily all the costs, Commissioner. So for example, Board of Education, DOT, Central Service, and the other one, Fire Department, they take care of all the equipment.
Right.
They pay the officer's salary, but that's the extent of the expenses for them. So we provide the inmate labor.
Right.
All the equipment, vans, lawn mowers, zero turners, they take care of all that.
Got it, but I know you all use our equipment as well, right?
Our equipment are specifically for county projects, cemetery, engineering, so.
Got it. And Ms. Allen, what's the number again? It's 2. what that we're having to add every year?
2.9.
2.9, so 2.9 we're having to add that every year out of the budget. Along with now, we have $25 million ask for a new prison, which I know that there was talk from your state folks that stated that they could bring in the teams that could assist with some of the construction and so on. But I was at the meeting, and I know, and you can clarify this for us as well, Mr. Warden, I think I was wanting to ask the question if the state would provide any level of funding towards this, and what was the answer?
I suppose no.
Yeah, so the answer was absolutely no. So I wanted to make sure we clarified that. There is no state piece that's going to come into this. If there's going to be a 25 million build out for prison, that means it's going to have to come from the taxpayers in Augusta.
Right, the other thing that did suggest is that they're going towards a modular type units.
Sure.
And I think he explained that as well at the meeting. These are units they pre, you know, fabricate at a location, and they bring them in and drop them, and we just attach the water, the electrical, and so forth. And I think he mentioned, I think he gave a figure, 250 bed is right at 6 million. That was said during the meeting.
So who provided the $25 million estimate? Did you provide that to us, or?
Right, so 2022, the commission approved us to secure a vendor.
Yes sir.
And that particular vendor, he came back with that estimated cost.
Yeah, and the problem with that is, I mean, that's three years. So of course, each year, costs are consistently rising. So that 25 million could easily be 30 million right now, we don't know. Now, we could look at the option that they were talking about, the modular. But again, I'm looking at a sustainability aspect of this. Because right now, we have a lot of human factors that are in play, and we don't have any consistency to be able to manage the output of services that's going to come from leveraging the inmate support in that regard. And that's what really kind of brings a lot of upset with our operations. Because everyone's like, hey, when are we going to get this cut? How are we going to get this cut, and so on? And if that is supposed to be done by the inmate labor, and it's not available, then what do we do? And in those situations, I know Dr. Malik isn't here, but in those situations, Ms. Allen, I would assume we would either have to contract out or try to work it in from in-house team members, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, so we're still having to supplement additional dollars just to match pace with trying to maintain what we have as well, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, and that's why, that's why for me, I'm a little torn because the cost and the risk of it all are just, they're not really meeting. I know with the numbers that you all gave, and y'all did your absolute best to try to just give an honest estimate of what it is, but there's a lot of costs that we don't know that's still in there. Even this cost that I just brought up about the additional monies that have to be spent to cover and supplement when the inmate labor isn't available. I mean, because at the end of the day, whether they're available or not, we still got to do it. It doesn't stop the calls that we're getting from 311. It doesn't stop folks wanting to see things maintained. So it puts us in the challenge of really, from a sustainment perspective, is this sustainable? And that's where I'm really torn with it. So I appreciate the effort that you and the team did, Ms. Allen. Chief, I appreciate you, number one, for your service. I don't think everybody knows that you are retiring at the end of the year, but you've carried this message consistently, and you've done an amazing job in the prison itself. When we walked in, it was immaculate for, you know, what you would expect to see. It exceeded expectations, but you got a lot of challenges in there. It's a lot of original equipment from 1963 that's still up and running. And it's pretty crude when you saw the electrical system and the boiler room and all that. That's going to be a lot. So I'm trying to consider all those things with this. I appreciate you all kind of giving us some numbers to consider, but I just wanted to make sure it was clearly understood. The state told us under no means is there even any leverage room for us to try to say, hey, well you do this and we do this. He pretty much stated no.
And if I could, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, one of the other things I did, I recommended to the administrator. So we reached out to the- to the administrator, so we reached out to the original designer.
Yes sir.
For the new facility and say, hey, what will be the cost if we reduce the population to maybe 150, 180? And the range he gave us was between 12 to 13 million. So that's just another option that's out there. I proposed that we reduce the population, that's one of my recommendations, be not sending about 60 out anyway on any given date. That would be a savings just for consideration. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, but you'll still be running into the same issue of staff though, right? If.
Potentially.
Having availability.
Right, potentially.
Yeah, and I think that's the variable for me, that's like, that's that unknown inconsistency that, that kind of brings another wrinkle into it. Because if they're not available, if they're out sick or if they, you know, find another job, because these are post-certified folks, right? So they can go anywhere in the region and find another job tomorrow if they wanted to.
Absolutely.
Yes sir. Okay. I appreciate the time, but again, I appreciate your, your service, sir.
Yes sir.
To what you do.
Thank you Commissioner Clark. Chair recognizes Commissioner Francine Scott from the ninth.
Thank you Mayor Johnson. A couple of things, and I know it's almost time for us to conclude, but I just want to say on record that Commissioner Oliver and Deputy Commissioner Ahmad said that the reason they're saying no to building something is because state correction facility, they do not build county facilities. That's number one. So it wasn't like, no, we're not going to do it. It's because they don't do it. They only build state facilities. So that was the reason they said absolutely not. So I just want to make sure we understand. It was not because of Richmond County, Augusta, or RCCI. They just do not do that. And number two, I just want, now you said eight, is that eight officers short or eight?
Yes ma'am, eight, eight detail officers.
Eight detail officers, okay. And these, your employees are county employees?
Yes ma'am.
So we, if, if we close, we have to find 73 jobs for county employees?
Ma'am.
Ms. Allen?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. My next question is about the medical cost. I know we talked about that in our meeting and you gave me a number of, is it about, when it's a thousand dollars, you all send those employ, inmates back to state custody so they are not just sitting there?
Right. If, if the medical cost exceeds a thousand, the state takes care of everything else. And if it's a serious illness, we do send them back to the state.
And I have one more question, but because of the time, I'll just ask Maddie Sue if I can just get with you to ask you one other question. So I do want to still recommend, I think this is a good program and I think the state is not saying just no because they are the one who suggested the mobile construction. And my state employment was with Department of Corrections. And so they do do a great job in terms of having mobile constructions in counties. So I do want to, before we said no, or give the position of saying that the state is not looking at ways to help Augusta, Richmond County. I just want to let you know that they are still willing to help. Thank you so much.
Thank you Commissioner from the ninth. Chair recognizes Commissioner Stacy Pulliam from the second.
Thank you Mayor Johnson. In light of what my colleague Commissioner Scott just stated regarding the medical costs, could I get, I want to be perfectly clear on that portion? So the state is absorbing that?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, so that's not something that Augusta, Richmond County is having to absorb?
Right, we pay up to the first thousand for any medical costs, anything after a thousand, the state handles.
Okay, all right. And then going back to this, the facility, the 25 million, because that's the number that keeps getting put out there, rightfully so, that's the quote that we, the latest quote we had. But of that 25 million, how much do we have already?
11 million.
11 million. And that 11 million is in fact allocated to that project?
Yes.
Okay, so we have 11 million already allocated to that project?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, and I just want to be clear on that because I understand the 25 million, but that's not what we're asking for. We're asking for 14 million plus whatever else it could possibly cost with the, with the cost of goods going up, construction and things of that nature. Warden Joseph, the mobile construction program, have we ever used that before?
We have housed them before. They were doing some work at Augusta State Medical Prison and we were able to get them to build some of these cages at the animal center. So if you ever go to the animal service, those cages were built by inmates.
Okay. And working with them in the past, and of course, you don't know who you're going to get, what was the experience?
I mean, it's pretty good. I mean, I've never had a problem with them at all.
And what was the cost of it? It, because I.
Cost to us.
There was no cost to us?
No ma'am.
Okay, so we got inmates in to actually build what needed to be built. In this instance, in helping to build a new facility, what would the cost to us be?
They, they wouldn't charge us anything because they, we're going to be utilizing the services of the inmates.
Okay.
So there's no cost for that. We just have to house them at the facility and wherever, you know, capacity as far as food, that, that really wouldn't be no cost to us additionally.
Okay, so they could, so do we, are we going to absorb the cost of the actual materials that are needed?
We'll have to take care of the materials.
Okay. So when you, and thank you so much Mayor Pro Tim Gillfoul, I don't know if he's still on the floor or not, but he mentioned to please get me those numbers. When you get me those numbers, if I need to send the specifics that I'd like, I would like a grand total of how much it would cost us if we use the mobile construction units. So out of the 14 million or now with inflation, I'll even throw in another 5 million and say 19, even though I'm probably going to be quoted on that. I'm just, you know, I want to know what the total would be if we actually use the mobile construction units. How much would that cost? That way we have a true read of that number for that, for that project. Okay, thank you so much, sir. Thank you Mayor Johnson. Thank you Administrator Allen.
Thank you Commissioner Pulliam. Warden Joseph, thank you for your service, sir, everything you've done for this community. Just know that. Hopefully you won't go far. Don't you laugh, you can't go far. Madam Administrator, is there a recommendation that's coming out of your office on this and which direction we should, should take or are you putting it as a policy decision by this governing body?
So to kind of wrap up, Mr. Mayor, you know, we had Augusta Utilities come in this morning for some policy decisions that are going to have to be made by the governing body. They talked about, of course, and I'm just going to deflect back to the Augusta Utilities since we're wrapping this up. They came back with the rates and of course, everybody knows that the infrastructure in Augusta is very, very old. And so they come back, it's been years since we've been using the 3% increase for the past, probably as, as Mr. Biden said, past 10 years. And so now they've come with the 4.5% this year, they bring the presentation, and now they're looking at 6.5%. So that's going to be one policy decision that's going to affect the budget. And now going over to RCCI, the policy decision is going to have to be how the governing body wants to move forward with RCCI. I think the Warden, you know, again, I've been knowing him for years and he's done a tremendous job at RCCI and taken, you know, advantage of everything he possibly can as it relates to the operations of RCCI. So now we just have to determine, is that budget model going to be the same model that we want to continue with so that, you know, it could be sustainable? And that's the question that we have because there is a variable that's not a fix, that's not fixed. And that's the amount of crews that we can get out. So for eight detail officers that we're missing, that's actually eight crews that are not going out to get the job done. So eight crew, eight detail officers equate to eight crews. And so that kind of impacts our operation, impacts how our other departments who depend on those crews get to perform their operations as well. So against both of them are policy decisions that the governing body is going to have to take into consideration for our 2026 budget. We just wanted to bring you all of the respective information. I know we brought a lot of information. Mr. Biden did a tremendous job this morning in bringing all the respective information on how the increase, the rate increase actually impacts our taxpayers as well as, you know, what's necessary for him to continue the operations to get our utilities where it needs to be. And I think Warden Joseph has done a tremendous job in showing the benefit that we have gotten for a number of years with our inmate labor. But both of them now are, come to you, the governing body, to think about how we want to proceed forward as it relates to a policy decision.
Thank you Madam Administrator. Seeing no colleagues in the queue, I think that concludes our session. This second budget hearing is hereby adjourned, all right, just for the public. When is the next budget work session?
Our upcoming work session, our next one again is Thursday, November 6 at 2:00 PM. We'll be talking about HCD, Housing Community Development, as well as talking about the departmental reductions and the NGO reductions. And then we'll have our next one on Thursday, November 13 at 2:00 PM.
Thank you Madam Administrator. This session is hereby adjourned.
Thank you.